Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13.
Board of Adjustment Meeting for March 21st, 2023. Let me begin by introducing the board. To my far right, David Mersky, Joanne Petito. To my far left, Teresa Page, Laura Montagno, Esther Olson Murphy. My name's Bob Pryor. I will be the acting chair this evening in the absence of our Chair Kevin Baum. Before we begin with the order of business, we have been notified that River Woods would like to table the discussion on the request for rehearing. And so, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I move to table the discussion on the request for rehearing on ZBA Case 22-15 and 22-16 until the board's next meeting on April 11th, as requested by the applicant.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. I will not be voting on this. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Five zero. We will hear that case of rehearing for River Woods on a special meeting on April 11th. Thank you. New business. We have one item of new business this evening, and then several items of other business. So first up will be the application of Jim Willett and Jane Woodward for a special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence into three residential condominiums. The subject property is located at 155 Court Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 104-36. This is EBA Case Number 23-3. You're the applicant?
She's a much better speaker.
Please step up to the microphone and...
Sure.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Jane Woodward, this is Jim Willett.
It's not for here, but you might want to... You're very soft-spoken, so you might want to move it up. There you go.
Is that better? Okay. We live in Exeter, we work in Exeter, we have one multifamily property on Carroll Street, and we bought this property at the end of September 2022. It is on Route 108 South, Court Street, kind of heading out of town. There's forested area across the street, there's a couple of homes next to it, one behind it, but overall, it's not so much of a neighborhood, it's just a little bit more of a rural area. We are not looking to change any of the footprint of the building, or anything about the land other than some improvements, taking down dead trees and that sort of thing. So what we're looking for is within the footprint, converting what was a single-family residence into two apartments, one up, one down, and then there's already an accessory dwelling unit that would make the third residence condo apartment. So that's sort of the basics. Any questions about that, or should I go on?
Condo or apartment?
Condo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't make a difference.
Right. Sorry.
Doesn't make a difference.
Yeah.
She said condo.
It is condo.
Please, continue.
Okay. So I begin just going through the questions. Current use, single-family home, Cape style with an attached-in-law. The owner asked, "We do not occupy the property." Proposed use, convert to two apartments and keep that third apartment for a total of three residences. These will be converted to condominiums. The justification for the special exception, Article 4.2, Schedule I, multi-family units are on the list of permitted special exceptions. That the use is so designated, located, and proposed to be operated, that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected. This is already a residence, causing no change in effect to the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience. See that the proposed use will be compatible with the zone district and adjoining post-1972 development. This is compatible with the residential nature of the zone district. That adequate landscaping and screening are provided as required herein. We've already begun cleaning up the landscaping there and will continue to do so. We're not taking anything down. That adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and ingress and egress is so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. There remains adequate parking. We're not increasing the number of people who live there. So there are already six spaces...
Seven spaces.
Seven spaces. We're actually, we've also kind of graded that, and we have plans to pave it, but you have to wait and do that in stages, so that's not done yet.
Have you been through the parking guidelines to see how many are required? It's not based on whether you're increasing or decreasing, it's based on the number of bedrooms.
Sorry, yes. So five bedrooms, my understanding, two spaces per bedroom? Or, no, I'm sorry, per unit, sorry, thank you.
Plus one.
Okay, so six plus one, three units, two per plus one, so yes.
And you have sufficient onsite parking?
Yes. Yeah. That the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except as may otherwise be determined. It does conform with the relevant regulations for Zone R2. As a special exception approval, we may be required to...
You don't need to read these.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good, you can stop right there.
Okay.
The only one I'm worried about is H.
Shall not adversely affect abutting...
Right.
Yeah, sure. So we tried to get a loan on this property. The appraisal was that it was uninhabitable, so the value of the property was pretty low at that point. We've already put several forty, fifty thousand dollars into it to make the first apartment habitable, and obviously, we're intending to make the rest habitable, so we're intending to increase the value and the appearance of the property pretty dramatically.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. It was... You could not secure a loan because it was deemed uninhabitable?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in rough shape, on the inside.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off. Anything else?
No, I...
Okay. I and J, you certainly don't need to worry about. Before opening this up to the board, I just want to make a point of clarification, since there are six of us this evening, some, only five will vote. Is there somebody amongst the alternates who would like to vote? The alternates would be Teresa and...
We're three, we're both alternates.
You're both alternates. You're both alternates. I thought one of you was a full-time member.
I'm a full member.
Teresa's a full-time member. Laura's the alternate.
I'm the alternate.
You're an alternate.
Right. Did somebody, would one of the three of you not want to vote on this?
Yeah, I'll not.
You're not gonna vote on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so you won't be voting, you can ask questions, obviously, but... So everyone but Mr. Mersky will be voting on this application. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I just have one question about the accessory dwelling unit. How many bedrooms?
One.
Okay, and then there's two on the first floor in the main house, and one on the...
Okay, yes.
Just so there's no confusion, there was not an accessory dwelling, that was an in-law apartment.
Okay.
It was a single-family home with an in-law. There was no legal...
There was never legally an accessory dwelling in it?
There was never...
Correct.
People just call it an accessory, because...
Yes.
But, that's fine. I just want to make that clear on the record.
It's fine, thank you.
That it's not an accessory or...
Teresa, you got another question?
I have one question that's for my edification. If it's three units, does it need to go to the planning board automatically, or is it, if it's three, above three?
It does not need to go automatically.
If it's three.
And the only reason that I could foresee doing it is if there was a change to the footprint. There was something about the nature of the building that would change, which doesn't appear to be the case. Did you also have a question about the driveway?
The driveway.
Yeah, Laura or Teresa?
Is that a shared driveway with the unit with the home behind?
It, they have a right-of-way, but they have their own driveway.
They have their own driveway.
Sir, you actually can't speak, because one at a time, you have to speak into the microphone, so it's recorded for posterity.
So raise your hand if you want to say something enough.
Either of you can speak. You can talk.
That's fine.
But you have to use the mic. It is a shared driveway?
No, they have a right-of-way, but they have their own driveway.
Do they use it?
No, not since we've bought it. Not once.
Are you planning on putting up some... It's a right-of-way, so you can't put a, you couldn't put a fence, for example? Was this carved out, one family?
Yes. It was split up. The house in the rear was a family member. I want to say the right-of-way was more for utility easements for the rear property. The sewer, water, and all those facilities go along their driveway, and that's why the second driveway was put in closer to town. You notice there's another driveway closer to town. That is the rear property's access.
So when I went out and looked at the property, it didn't appear, it appeared as if they were using the right, the back property was using the right-of-way and not the side, their designated driveway. It didn't even look like it was plowed, so I think that there may be more traffic going on there than you might think. The other thing that wasn't clear to me was, like, where, without having a site map with, like, where the designated parking spaces are, it's not clear to me, like, where all those cars are going to park. It wasn't quite evident that there really wasn't a parking there to support the three different units.
Okay, sure. So in the garage, there's currently two cars. I'll let him do the technical here.
So we actually brought in a paving company last fall. They dug out seven full spaces and gravelled seven full spaces. So we carved that out of the backyard itself. So there's definitely seven spaces. Matter of fact, you could park ten cars there. For sure.
Okay. I guess it would have been helpful to have, like, a plot, in other petitions that we've seen, we've had, like, a plot plan that shows the house and where all those designated parking spaces are.
We're very, very new to this, so we apologize.
Yeah, so that would have been helpful for me to really...
It's really bad on me for not informing them to have, showing a parking area, but we can make that as a condition, if you approve, yeah, they put something on a piece of paper and show where the parking spaces are.
With regard to the right-of-way, I have spent dozens, if not hundreds, of hours doing work there. Not once has anybody in the rear house ever used that driveway.
Okay.
So it's definitely not a regular use. What they had, so one of the, one of the gentlemen who died, I guess, sometime back, one of the tenants, or one of the people living in that back house apparently was quite sick, and they needed deliveries, so they had asked us to be careful that we keep that open. And again, I've seen a delivery truck or two, nothing recent, but certainly over the first couple of months that we owned it. But again, other than that, they seem to use their own driveway.
If you were to park seven cars, would it impede access to the back?
None whatsoever. That was the intent of having the paving company come in and dig out part of the actual turf area to create the space for that.
And in the same token, if seven cars were parked there and one needed to leave, is it a situation where any one car could get out, or is there shuffling around that we need to...
So as you, and again, had I, we know we would have, you know, as you drive in to the driveway, there is a good fifteen to twenty feet wide driveway that goes all the way to that back building, and all to the right is where we had them, again, which would be the backyard of the house, is where we had that completely dug out and where you can park cars. Once it's paved, so we did this last fall, they suggested, because it was so wet and so loose to drive on it until next fall, and then we're gonna have it paved, and once it's paved, we'll have it lined and be very specific with regard to the parking.
Any further questions to the applicant? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, there's no need for you to rebut. I wasn't sure why you were here, so now we know that it's not for this application. There we go. All right. So with that, I will close the public session, we'll move to deliberations. Would somebody just like to quickly walk us through the, through the criteria and see if there are any questions that come up, and how we pass on each of the, I think it's seven or eight criteria that we need to address here? Do we have a volunteer?
I'll do it.
Joanne, thank you.
Okay, so for special section, there are several criteria. I'll just go through them. That the use is a permitted special exception is set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule I, and I believe that it is.
It is.
Okay. That the use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated at the public health, safety, and welfare, and convenience will be protected. I don't think that's an issue, and the parking situation seems to have been taken care of. The neighbors have a right-of-way, but they also have their own drive, and...
No additional curb cuts, nothing else going onto Court Street, so it should be okay?
Okay. That the proposed use will be compatible with the zone district and adjoining post-1972 development where it is to be located. I think, I don't think that that's an issue.
You may recall that we had a request, I think it was at the last meeting, the meeting before, for a conversion to two units, condominium units on Riverbend Circle, so there are other multiple-family residences in the immediate area, so...
It appears to be compatible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's purely residential, and there are other multifamilies.
Okay. Adequate, there's adequate landscaping and screening provided as required. I noticed there is landscaping there. There are trees and shrubs and that sort of thing. Adequate off-street parking is, and loading is provided, and ingress and egress is designed so as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. I don't think there's any interference, it just, it doesn't go on and off Court Street, it goes on the side street.
No, it goes to Court Street.
Oh, it does go to Court Street.
Yeah, it goes to Court Street. It does, but there's no additional curb cuts.
Okay.
I will make a note at this point that whoever makes a motion, if it is in fact a motion to approve, that we do make a condition of approval, that the applicant provide visual evidence of the correct number of parking spots.
Okay, right.
So whoever makes the motion, please make a note of that.
Okay. That the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except as may otherwise be determined for large-scale developments. It's a residential area condo, multifamily, I think it conforms. The applicant may be required to obtain town plan or review, and I think we said that that's not an issue here, although it is conversion of three units. Well, it's a conversion of two units, there's already one.
It's a conversion of one unit to three.
I don't believe that we need to make it a condition of approval, because there's no exterior change to the property. That's my own take on it. If anyone else feels the town plan or review would be necessary?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, and that the use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values. I think, given that, it fits in with the other types of residences that are in the area. We haven't heard anything that would suggest that it would adversely affect abutting or nearby property values.
If anything, the opposite.
Yeah. It's a, yeah, rundown property that's being restored.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't think that I and J apply. There's no bulk storage, and it's not a professional tech block district.
All right. You're on a roll, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Let's see. I make a motion to approve the application of Jim Willett and Jane Woodward for a special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence into three residential condominiums. Subject property is located at 155 Court Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 104-36. With the condition that the applicant provide a map or other visual aid to show that adequate parking has been provided for the required number of spaces.
Excellent. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, five zero. It's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We'll take care of the evidence for the party.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, under other business, we have two items. We've already had the motion on the Riverwoods' application. We have a request for a rehearing by an abutter to the Samuel Leitner property on 25 Clover Street, which is an application that was heard, was it last month? It must have been last month, it was last month. As you know, the request for a rehearing...
May I just remind you about the number of people?
Oh, yeah, good point. You're not gonna vote on this one, because you were, you voted on the original.
Right.
Right. Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so Ms. Petito will be not voting on this one. So as you know, the nature of a request for rehearing is that we just discuss it amongst ourselves, and if approved, then the applicant would be forced to come back next month and re-present an application. The nature of the request has to be either that there is new evidence that has arisen that was not presented at the original application, or that the board feels that an error was made. I realize it was not unanimous, that I believe the vote was four to one at the time. I would certainly, will open it up to the board for any discussion about whether or not we feel that a rehearing is appropriate.
I think a rehearing's appropriate, because I don't think that the, this evidence that came in at the end about the safety is really accounted for in the decision, and I think that the abutter should have the opportunity to present their side of this, and also that the applicant should have the opportunity to prepare for that criticism which came at the end, which wasn't part of, since that person wasn't an applicant, it wasn't in writing. And I think it's a good chance, it's a good use of the rehearing to do that. Also, because from my perspective, the safe, anytime safety's raised, I think we should just be careful about it.
Mm-hmm.
I think if we're gonna address that as the issue of bringing it back, then we should be looking very closely at what the regulations are in order for it to be a safe corner. I believe Doug talked about the fact that it had to be, there had to be visibility thirty feet, thirty feet from the both corners on a diagonal, there had to be visibility. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, then I think we need to present whether it is a safe corner or not. You know, I've walked that, I've walked that street many, many times, quite honestly. The blockage, just eyeballing it, there's a big tree sitting there, right on that corner. That is what is blocking the view. It's not the building, or the proposed building, that is on that, eyeballing it, that thirty feet, but I think if we're gonna do that, to your point about the safety, then we should do it within the constructs of what are the requirements for a safe quarter, corner according to the town of Exeter.
Well, I think we should do it based on what the facts are of that neighborhood and this proposed proposal, not just the regulations, which aren't, which they give this decision to the board to examine the facts, and...
But that's one person, I'm sorry, but that's one person's opinion, which is fine, I'm okay with that, and I'm, I'm open to, you know, talking about, you know, opening it, but I think that we need to do it within the constructs of what is considered a safe corner, and address that, not, I don't think it's safe.
No, well, I don't think that, that is the, that's the language that this person said, used, but she, when she got up and talked about the issues, but it wasn't strictly a matter of the rules. What she was talking about was something that I, as somebody who's been through that neighborhood and, you know, actually looking for houses for a number of years, and having, knowing people in that area, that my concern is that coming through that, that neighborhood with a different type of, this type of structure that's proposed, and the way it's set up on the corner, and that it's going to affect, you know, I, I recognize that, I think a rehearing would be appropriate, because obviously, there could be, four people voted for it, so my, my perceptions didn't, didn't control the decision. However, I'm looking at, that, that the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance, the substantial justice are all addressed by this request for rehearing and by the testimony that this person gave regarding her concerns about it. And I, as I said at the, at the hearing, during discussion, when the issues of these regulations came up, I don't think that strictly just apply a regulation and say, oh, you've met some requirement, you have to make the considerations about how this proposed project is going to affect these other considerations that are the variance criteria, and, and I think that there's a sufficient question raised that it merits a rehearing.
We have to put it in the context, as Mr. Mersky says, of the variance criteria, because this was a variance request, so it's not a, it's not a mechanical issue. And so your, your case, Mr. Mersky, is based on you feel that the, we erred because the applicant does not meet the Articles 1, 2, and potentially 3, in your opinion, of the variance criteria?
And there, well, and there was also the issue of value of surrounding properties, but I don't, I think that intellectually, you can surmise that, but I don't think they brought in evidence of...
Right.
...property values, so I don't know that in past...
That's always a tough, that's always a tough one to make with...
In past situations that I've been involved in, it was, the board was very particular requiring some kind of evidence of that, so I don't think that criteria was...
Any other discussion of the request for rehearing?
I, I'm not voting, but I have a question.
Absolutely.
And I wasn't at the meeting, but just from reading the request for rehearing in the minutes, is there an issue about the height of this structure? Does it go up higher? Was there a concern that the height might obstruct the view around the corner? I don't know.
There was a mention of it being taller than the houses around it, so it might be distracting, because it's taller, it's not the standard single-story, it's a story and a half. a half. But there are other...
I think...
There's other two stories.
The bulk of the houses are one-story, but this is, this house is, already has a significantly peaked roof. So I don't think the height is the issue. The issue is how far toward the street.
It is.
It would go and whether that in fact blocks the visual. There is a stop sign at the intersection. The stop sign would not in any way be impeded. We're certainly not responsible for people violating stop signs. But if you come to a full stop at the stop sign, is your line of sight obstructed by the proposed construction or the construction that we have, as of now, approved, I think is the, is the question. Any further questions or other further discussion?
Just, you go.
No, go ahead.
Well, I just, what she's using, I don't see new evidence in the letter. She's repeating what was mentioned in the meeting, that she's still concerned about the safety that we discussed. And three out of the four of us did not see it, did not agree with that. Fine, those feelings. I guess that's the thing, as I'm having, if we want a rehearing, I don't think we can do it based on new evidence because this was already discussed at the original meeting.
I agree with that. And then looking at the request for rehearing was jumping out to me as the justification for it is that they erred in the decision on the hardship criteria specifically, that it seems like there were other options for the addition. And I was in attendance at the meeting, but not in, in participation as a board member. But I think that issue was given a healthy amount of discussion with the tree to the side and the child's play area to the back, that it, because of the nature of the property, it was really difficult to put this addition anywhere else. So that seemed to me to be the focus for the request and then kind of a reiteration of the safety issues that were discussed. So I would agree that new evidence wouldn't be the basis. And I'm kind of having trouble with, you know, responding specifically to the request for rehearing and the reasons that they've given for it.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll accept a motion.
I move that we grant a rehearing of this application. What was it?
No, somebody get him the cover sheet.
Samuel Leitner, ZBA Case Number 23-5, 25 Clover Street. Request for rehearing by a butter, that we grant the request for a rehearing.
Is there a second? Hearing none. Is there an alternative motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Please.
I move to not grant the request for a hearing on the case of Samuel Leitner, ZBA Case 23-5, 25 Clover Street.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to deny the request for a rehearing on ZBA Case 23-5 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion not to, the motion to deny the request passes four zero.
No, four one.
Four one. Sorry. Okay. And we have the approval of the minutes of January 23rd and February 21st.
We still don't have the minutes.
I'm afraid we do not.
We're gonna have a lot of minutes.
Yeah, they're beginning to stack up, aren't they?
Well, they can do February.
We can do February 21st. So it would be myself, Esther, Laura, and Dave. And Laura?
Only one Laura's here.
Only one. So Laura Davies is not here. You're right. I stopped reading it Laura because there was a return there.
It's gonna be hard with two Lauras.
The two Lauras. I know, I know. Okay. You're officially Jane from now on.
You're Laura Junior.
I want to be Karen.
You can talk.
Well, that's right. I can't be Karen.
Yeah, you know, I'm, spot's taken. So are there any comments on the extensive? I did not find anything. We have 29 Garfield Street. Obviously, there was quite a bit of discussion there. That was ultimately withdrawn. We have the application for Janine Richards, which was the application on Hobart Street that was eventually approved. And then we have the Leitner case, which we've just been over again. Did anybody find anything in the minutes they would like to comment on?
No, I looked at them carefully and I didn't find any.
She's so good. We're lucky. We're so lucky. We really are. Keep her, please. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 23rd meeting, please?
I move that the board approve the draft, the minutes that are in this draft of February 21st, 2023.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are good. We still can't approve January because of the people who are, who are here or not here. Whole different strategy. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it was a long night.
I just want to, before we, I accept a motion to adjourn, officially say how pleased I am to have a robust board. I'd like to re-welcome Ms. Petito and Mr. Merzke, whom I haven't had the pleasure of seeing very often recently, and welcome Ms. Montagno and Ms. Page. I think it's wonderful that we've got a full board. It'd be nice going forward. So we're all set for tonight. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.